Thank you. Okay.
Wait, hold on, hold on. There we go.
Okay, I think we're, we're okay. We're overlapping all our technical difficulties at one time this morning. So, thank you, everyone, for attending our study session on December 10th. I would like to note that we have, we do have the ability to translate this meeting. I'm going to have our translator give the directions as well. To access translation, you can click on the globe at the bottom of your screen and then the language. And at this time, I'd like to ask if anyone who needs translation, translation, to please click on that participation icon at the bottom of your screen and to raise your hand.
Buenos dias to all, bienvenidos to this session of study. This session is being pre-recorded and recorded, and we're also going to have services for interpretation. If you need an interpreter in Spanish, I would like to ask that in the lower part of your screen, select the mapamundi or the globe that you see as a globe. And also, lift your hand to know who needs to be interpreted. How many of us are participating in Spanish? After I finish talking, you will see this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Marina. And I will ask occasionally during the meeting if we still have people with us who need translation services. All right, our, the board met in closed session immediately prior to this open session, and we discussed personnel matter review and possible action on employment dismissal or discipline of a district employee. It is my understanding that we have not received any requests for public comment, at least under this section of the meeting. I'm going to ask for a quick agreement with that. We're doing everything remotely today, so it makes things a little trickier. And no public comment, thank you. All right. Our first item today, 6.01, is a presentation to our outgoing board member, Walt Malar, who's been with us a long time and is very much appreciated. So I will turn it over to the people handling that.
Well, I would like, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. I would like to just first of all acknowledge the group, Ashley, Mandy, and the team in putting together sort of a farewell message to you, Mr. Malar. There are two things that you're going to receive for over two decades of service to the school board as trustee, that you have done an amazing job beyond, beyond the, what many people realize. And what we decided to do is capture people's thoughts through video. And so you'll receive a video compilation, which we'll watch in a moment, of what individuals in our organization and outside of our organization wanted to share with you. And then also, a more intimate view, we will provide you with a card where many people have decided to put in writing, for your eyes only, what, what, what your service has meant to them. So you'll have those two parting gifts. And, and I would like to, if it's okay with everyone, Ashley from Illinois, who is our Cal Poly intern working remotely, she has been so gracious to put this together. So, so Walt, you'll receive this in a, in a actual DVD as well as a hard copy card. So you'll have it in two spots. So for today, Ashley, would you be so kind to play that for us?
Yes, of course.
Somebody screen sharing? I'm not, I'm not seeing it, I apologize. Ellen, can you screen share?
You know, it's coming up, Mark, just hold on.
I'm so impatient.
Just hold on.
I apologize for this. We're just going to, one moment, we have a bit of a technical issue with the sound. I'm going to help Ashley out, and you'll be right there.
Now you can talk to him.
Paulie Walter.
Rick Mason here.
Just want to say thank you for everything that you've done for this district, these kids. To help my job easier.
I'm so sorry.
You always put the kids first. And I'm also sorry that we never got out on the golf course. Walt, we said we were going to do that, and we never did it. So my understanding, though, is that there are some great courses in Nova Scotia. One in particular, right on the cliffs, I can't remember the name of it. But I think I'm going to have to come up there and visit you and lots to go out and play that course. So anyway, wherever your next adventure is, I hope it's a great one. Best of luck to you. And again, thanks for all that you've done for these kids, this district. And what a pleasure to work with you. Take care of yourself, bye.
Walter, I really want you to understand how much this community is going to miss you, especially the schools and the students, and all, all, all the number of years that you put in. So in this video, I've worked really hard to find props that will convey just how long you've been with the school board. Walter, I hate to see you leaving the school board. It's meant a lot to me to work with you and to have all that sage advice that you were able to pass on to all of us. Sometimes things got a little bit hot. It was a pleasure working with you. You always understood and knew what you were talking about. I know you always wanted our students to have the most up-to-date textbooks.
As far as I know, your email was only hacked once, and one of your Zoom meetings had a troll.
Walter, you always knew what it was to be a good school board member. I know you always knew how to use the latest technology. You always did what you thought was best for kids, and you always fought for what you believed in. Walter, I always hope you're there as someone that I can call on. I will miss you and the wisdom that you brought us to the school board.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your 20 years of service with the school district. Because of you and your contributions, this district is a better place for kids. And that's a fantastic thing to be able to say. Personally, on Mr. Witt's insight at the board meetings, and I just wish you well in the future. Thank you. Thank you. Hey, Walter. Been 20 years. 20 years since we first ran the school board together. And, and, and I'm sorry to see it end, but I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that you've done. We started off, remember, in 2000. The financial crisis that made us close three schools. Things got better. We always did what we had to do. Then they shut down Diablo. Worked through SB 1090. Had the district get some protection. Establish a foundation. And there's Measure D, a lasting legacy to us and our communities. Things that you have really been intimately involved with. You know, kind of like an old married couple, Walt, you and I. We've seen a lot, we've done a lot. And I just want to acknowledge that you always, always kept in mind what was in the best interest of the district. And you always understood your role in the governance, as a governance guy for the district. You didn't try to micromanage the district. You always brought us back on point. I'm going to miss the heck out of you. I wish you well. Take care. Love you, buddy.
Hi, Walter. I got enough of that. So value what you've brought to being a trustee and your insights, your careful thoughtful consideration of issues, the way you've broken down complex legal concepts so that I can understand them. And just your genuine heart for kids has always been at the forefront of why you do the things you do. So I consider you a true friend. I just love you dearly. But I can't imagine what it would be like to serve without you. But I wish you everything good. And I don't plan to allow this to be the end of our relationship. So please take good care and know that we're very, very well-loved by your fellow board.
I will. I received an invitation to do this video in honor of your retirement from the school board. And I was promised that this would be a private communication and that only you would see it. So I'm comfortable in saying some pretty sensitive things, I think you understand. I was playing bingo the other night, and naturally, I thought of you and all the adventures you have before you. I just wanted to remind you that we are living under some pretty serious cautions right now. So as you enter retirement, I, I want you to remember that, that you're not to show your face anywhere. That you're not to leave your house. And try to breathe as little as possible. And these are my advice to you as you enter retirement. So it's probably better to dwell on the past than being no future. We go back a long ways. I remember your PTA stint and our arguments over combination classes. You were for grouping kids exclusively by grade level, regardless of the costs. And I was dedicated to, like, solvent school districts. And under your leadership, by the way, for a few years, neither one of us got what we wanted. You're also active as a parent rap on the district's strategic planning team, a team I discovered I was in charge of immediately upon arrival in the district and about which I knew nothing. And I remember I was so comforted at our first meeting when, when you shared your ideas on the strategic planning process and the objectives and things that we should consider. I realized that I was no longer alone and that I had found you. And I had found someone who was just as confused and uninformed as I was. And then against all odds, you became a board member and served with distinction. No offense to any other candidate, but I'm sorry that this election didn't turn out the way you had hoped. I, I want you to know that I voted for you five times. I'm actually guilty of that. But no, the election wasn't rigged. Those, each vote was in a separate election, but I did vote for you all those times. And I'm not sorry, I did. And on a serious note, Walt, it was an honor to work with you and an even greater honor to know you as a person and a friend. There are always serious and difficult issues facing the school district, and you face them with honesty, integrity, courage, and even humor. And our community owes you a great debt. I'm sending you my thanks and wishing you all good things for the future. And yes, I'm wearing pajama bottoms as I make this video. All the best, Walt, take care.
So Walter, here we are, the scene of the crime. I'm going to use some pep talk for you, because you'll understand that. I'm going to touch some witnesses. Carrie Lane, Wendy Gould were there when we met. Don Schellenberger, Amy Shields, Jill Sable, Roy Geary, Darla Matista, Linnley Sainsbury, Ed Valentine, Steve Vlad, and others. There's no getting away from it. But seriously, Walt, I wouldn't be a trustee for San Luis Coastal if it weren't for you. You were the one who noticed that I was interested in learning about the way the schools worked, the way the district worked, how to best help all our kids. You suggested I serve on school site council. You suggested I participate as a community member on the budget committee when PG&E went bankrupt several years ago. I served on Steve Vlad's advisory council. And then I replaced John Scatford when he left and he supported my appointment to the school board. I've been ever very grateful for that, Walt. You also served as a mentor for me and helped me learn the ropes. You learned about the fiscal and judiciary responsibilities of a school board member. You taught me how important it is that we stay up above and set goals and priorities and we not micromanage anybody. You served in that role for me willingly and with great wit and intelligence and were always available to answer all my questions. And further, you became, you were a friend before, so we became good friends during my time on the board. You helped me get to school board meetings when I was going through chemotherapy. You gave me a ride when I broke my leg. You were there for me, you thick and thin. I really appreciate it. I consider myself a successful advocate for kids in our district. And I want you to know that you played a role on this, and that. You have served our district, our community, our kids, our schools, our staff with great wit, deep intelligence, a huge caring, sometimes a little bit of impatience. You've done the board promotion, and I think you hold that, that role dear to you, as we all do. We will miss you. You are loved. We will remain in touch. Thank you, Walt, for all you've done.
Hi, Walt, Diane and Joyce from Student Services. We want to thank you for your service on the board these last 21 years. You've been such a great support of Student Support Services, me and Joyce, and students with special needs throughout the district, so thank you. And we really appreciate all of your support, and we wish you all the best as you start on a new adventure in retirement. Take care.
Hey, Walt, it's Krista Keller from Pacific Beach High School and Student Support Services. I just wanted to thank you for everything you've done on the Board of Education and your advocacy and support for at-risk and struggling students around the school district. Your guidance has always been sought and appreciated, and I just want to thank you for everything you've done.
Hey, Walt, it's Kim. I just wanted to say thank you. I so appreciate the amount of time that you have put in to dedicate yourself to our school district and for the kids in San Luis Coastal. I so appreciate your just consistent foundation, your understanding of legal questions, your deep thoughts into asking really pointed, targeted questions that are always really helpful, your respectful manner in which you interact with staff, and most importantly, your deep commitment to children. Thank you so much.
Hey, Walt, Kristen here. I am really, really going to miss you. Your sage advice constantly keeping everybody in check, including all of us. And I sure hope I'm going to see you around. Thank you so much for everything you've done for San Luis Coastal. You will really, really, really be missed.
Good evening, Mr. Malar, Walt. I've been thinking that our time on the board together has been rather brief but intense. This year in particular, we've been called upon to make some really difficult decisions in some very challenging times. And it's been clear to me that your commitment and dedication to both our teachers and our students has been impressive and unwavering. I think this is reflective of the many years of service that you provided to our board and our district. I'd also like to thank you for extending a warm welcome to a new trustee. It takes a while to grow into this difficult position. And as you move ahead, I hope that you stay safe, stay sane. Maybe that's more difficult in these times. But anyway, stay well and be well. Take care, Mr. Malar.
Hey, Walt, this is Joyce Hanson, coordinator of Special Ed for San Luis Coastal, and just want to say how much we appreciate all the work you have done to support special education students in San Luis Coastal. Special Ed can be a crazy and contentious world, and just knowing that we have board members like you that back us up and support us 100% has just been amazing. Thanks for all your efforts.
I've been wondering why I'm wearing this mustache. The answer is, I'm pretty sure when I met you in 2010, that you were wearing a very trim white mustache like this. And you also had a very regal head of white hair that caused my sons to refer to you as the centaur. With all due respect, because they think centaurs are awesome. And so that's why I was wearing a mustache. But now I'll just tell you that. I want you to know how much I appreciate your dedication to the school board and especially to Point Beach High School. I just want to point out all of the hours of work that you put in to training those students to be young attorneys and to compete in the mock trial competitions. They were amazing, and as you know, they won several awards. I'm also grateful to you for your thoughtful questions at board meetings, as well as your free legal advice. But you will, you will be sorely missed, Walter. And, but I am just so happy that you found happiness. And I just want to say, enjoy your trips to Nova Scotia. I look forward to seeing you in the film festival. Be happy, stay well. We love you.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the two decades of service that you've given San Luis Coastal. I want to thank you for putting kids first, and I want to thank you for being such an amazing trustee. You are the embodiment of the term trustee. I've grown to respect your decision-making. I love your humor, and I'm going to miss you. Thank you again for all that you've done for us.
Is there a dry eye in the house?
Just barely. All right, everybody, sit back. I'm, first of all, I'm very touched, and I just want to say that, well, let me just go down through a couple of notes. First of all, Ed Valentine, I remember he came to C.L. Smith to promote composite classes, or not promote them, to report on combo classes. And I remember I asked him, can you, are you telling me the combination classrooms will provide the same educational opportunity for kids as a by-grade classroom? And he said no. And I've respected the man ever since, because he was telling the truth. Now, I do understand why we did it, why we have combination classrooms and still do. I do understand staffing and those things far better than I did when I asked Ed that question. But Ed told it like it is, and that's why he's such a terrific guy. One of the reasons. And the, the district planning, strategic planning thing, I'm just kind of remembering some of these things. We knew we were in trouble on the strategic planning team when we had a strategic planning thing that dealt with having too many strategic planning. And, you know, wait, we've got to do something about this. And I have to say Eric's approach to it improved the situation. I love C.L. Smith. I walked Zachary, my five-year-old son at the time, across the street to Carol Hutchinson's classroom for kindergarten. She's a legend, huge Dodger fan, but she could have been a Marine Corps drill instructor. She, she just knew how to take charge of these little kids and the parents. He wanted to be overly helpful. So she had a little box of assignments for the parents. You just checked the box, you didn't need to talk to her or anybody else, and it was great. Jill Sable, what a wonderful person. As a librarian, Smith, you could just see the fire in kids' eyes when they'd come in from a classroom and want to check out every book on dinosaurs or every book on one thing or another. And Jill knew just where they were, knew, which is so encouraging for the kids. It was really a wonderful experience. And I've just got to say, the, we've been through three PG&E bankruptcies, Chris and Marilyn and guys. And every time, we've not only landed on our feet, we've actually done better. The first, and, and I must say, other than the current things facing the board, the most difficult thing I'd had to do pre, prior to that was closing those three schools, because we had employees that lost their jobs. Our teachers, you know, we, they followed the kids, but, you know. Our teachers, you know, we, you know, they followed the kids, but, you know, so, and that was very difficult. And I remember seeing the individuals standing in the boardroom when we had to make that decision. And that was tough. What's going on right now is a lot tougher and I just, I just want to say about that, the, our board members and staff have been anguishing over this. So please, parents, public folks out there, the idea that somehow the board is going to rubber stamp things, by the way, one of my pet peeves of all times, and they're not doing their diligence and, and following what they need to know about stuff is just silly. They work hard. We don't rubber stamp anything. If you're not approving your superintendent's recommendations that he's bringing to you or she's bringing to you, you need a new superintendent, you know, because they're not working well with the board and staff to get these things to us and where we understand and participate in the recommendations. So, sorry, I got distracted a little bit on that. Love Pacific Beach High School in part because I watched Dan Kirk get my son back interested in school, enthusiastic and through to graduation. I realized that that was a treasure of a school in our district and we had teachers there who happened, same thing happens in all of our sites, who are doing miracles and they're connecting with kids and making stuff happen for children and it's just amazing. I watched kids during the, the mock trial team at PB discover abilities in themselves and I realized this is the gift and the wonder that teachers experience on a regular basis where they see kids grow and learn about themselves and flourish. So, oh, just, Mark, I love the props. They're great. And let me just kind of wrap things up by saying, I never felt like I was sacrificing. There were some late meetings where I would get grumpy, yes. Kim Holmes used to walk by and drop a protein bar in front of me when she could tell. And I have gotten more back from this relationship with, with all of you and with the kids. And walking into a class at Baywood with Marilyn, where these little kids are on the floor doing projects and they see Marilyn and I walk in the doorway and one of them goes, stranger danger, stranger danger. We realized that, boy, they've gotten that part of the curriculum down really well. And just, you know, being on the campuses and working with our amazing teachers and administrators and staff. And I just want to give a shout out to one of the best votes I ever made and it was to hire Eric Prater. And he came to us and he asked a question. You guys have wonderful district. You've got great results, but with the resources you have, it was a statement more, with the resources that we have, we should be doing better. And that kind of shook my world and we were all feeling pretty good about, you know, ourselves and our APIs and things like that. And Eric and his bus, his team on the bus revitalized our district, I think, and has moved it toward equity and inclusion in ways that are just wonderful. Eric used to use the phrase, you know, putting people on the bus. And I remember, I think it was maybe Kim, but one of your, one of the last acquisitions is Eric might put it from somewhere else, was that his last team member is on the bus. And I said, well, good, well, you own the bus company. So, and it's, it's worked out really well. Let's see. I could just go on. I think some of you know that. But I want to just thank you all, particularly my colleagues on the board and my past colleagues on the board for the friendship and love and amazing collaboration on these things, putting up with me when I'm tired and grumpy at the end of the meeting. And, and to the administrative staff that I've had the pleasure to work with on a regular basis. And it's just, I'm, I'm just thrilled and delighted to have been able to participate in. I think I was responding to Pete and Kathy Zodovich to, nice thing they sent to me that my cup runneth over with the love and enjoyment and reward that I received, not only the past 20 years, but since little Zach Mallar went over to kindergarten. And it's been a wonderful part of my life. I'm gonna miss some aspects of it. I can't wait to get this COVID thing out of the way so we can at least spend some time together and, and, and swap some stories. And just for some of the folks, I'm not mentioning by name. I'm sorry, Rick Mayfield, amazing man. And we will play golf. Blue Nose Golf Course in, in Lunenburg, fabulous course, bring your mosquito repellent. And, and Ryan, I will see you again. By the way, I had my last Central Coast School funding meeting the other day. It was a little longer than normal, about seven minutes, I think it was. Julie was heard the last meeting too. So, anyway, thank you all for the, for the plaudits. I look forward to the next board meeting, not because it's going to be much briefer for me than normal, but I'll always be keeping an eye on the board meetings and I may not identify myself. I may use an alias. No, I'm not going to use any aliases. So, anyway, whoa, okay. So, you've done your worst. Let's get on to work and thank you all. I love you all.
Thank you all. All right. On that note, we will move on to a discussion of our, a less emotionally fraught topic, which is a review of our heating, ventilation and air conditioning in the district.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little hard to follow, Miss Shepherd. You know, with, with COVID-19, as the board knows, we, you know, one of the, one of the key things that we had to look at is the HVAC system in our classrooms, right? With bringing students and staff back. So what I've asked, what I've asked Chris Bonnet to do today, or Director of Mainz Facilities, is to kind of, with his staff, go through, so that the board has a better idea of what we're doing for the HVAC audit and repairs on one hand. And then, you know, we also learned about a new technology that actually Luciemar has integrated into their, into their classrooms. And so Chris is going to be sharing that information regarding that technology, ionization. We actually have a rep from the, I believe from the, the company itself is, who's here to, who will be here to answer questions about it. But it is something that I think at the end of the day, if I get a thumbs up from the board, I would like to bring kind of an emergency resolution to the board next Tuesday for us to put these units into our HVAC system. So you'll, you'll, you know, have much better understanding of what I'm asking at the end of the meeting today. And without any further ado, I'm gonna have Mr. Bonnet kind of take over and, and run us through, run the board through the HVAC audit and the ionization system that we're talking about.
Thank you, Ryan. Walt, I wish you the best. It's been a short time, but I know, I know where you're going. So I'm from that area up there, so enjoy. Okay, so I'm just gonna give you a quick little overview of what, what we're gonna cover. I'm gonna give you a little, a little background on the design of how air conditioning, what the steps they go through. I'm gonna have Jose, one of our own technicians, give a little description of the checklist they're going through as we do this audit. And then, as Ryan mentioned, for the ionizer, I have a gentleman, Chris Dunbar here from, what is it, NSWC that will explain a little bit. I'll share a little video and then you guys can ask any questions on that. So, to get started, I'll just kind of back up. We've had some questions about air conditioning and, and the processes they go through, what, what codes. So it, it's pretty extensive. When we, when the systems are designed, they have to meet several different types of code. So not only they meet national electrical code, they meet California electrical code, they meet state of California code, they meet energy efficient standards, Title 24, and then local and government regulations. And then overview of all of that is with DSA, which is the entity that approves the design for the school. So it's a pretty extensive process for every air conditioning, heating unit that is installed in the district. That being said, so we've been doing this audit and I'm gonna share my screen real quick to show you briefly. I'm gonna try anyway. So as we, as we talk about this audit, what we've been doing with our own staff and fortunately the, oh, I just don't go, hold on. One second. Try this again. So this is, this is the audit form that we've been working on for a couple of months now and it's pretty extensive. And what it is, we've gone through every unit in the district and checked it out. And I'll let, I'll let Jose explain what they're doing, but it's, you know, we have over 1,200 units in the district. So not only is our own staff in charge of the audit, we've also hired a company, Smith Electric, to come through with us and help us repair any of these things. And fortunately, it's allowed us to do a lot of stuff that we've been wanting to do because of the CARES Act funds. So, that being said, I'm gonna let Jose, works for our district, is our HVAC technician, kind of give you a little explanation of the checklist as they do this audit, what they're looking for, what they're, what they're, what, what it's all about. So go ahead, Jose.
Okay, good morning, everybody. So what I'm gonna talk about is just a list of what we've done to check our HVAC systems. And it all starts with verifying equipment modes of operation. If it's a heating-only system, we check, does the heat work properly? Is airflow flowing properly where it's supposed to flow? If it's a cooling system as well, same thing. Is it cooling properly? Is it turning on when it's supposed to? Is it shutting off when it's supposed to? Fan operation in every classroom, every system. And some of these fans are operated, some are direct drive and some are belt driven. So if it is a belt driven system, we're checking valves, replacing valves, adjusting belts. So there's a lot of that going on. We're checking, checking all the equipment control systems, digital thermostats, mechanical thermostats, control relays, temperature duct sensors. We are going through all our central time clocks, which basically will turn on and turn off a whole building of heating and/or air. Disconnect switches, can we properly and safely shut off a unit if needed? Is making sure all that works properly? And throughout this whole process, we've been replacing all equipment air filters. We've been checking dampers, actuators, making sure they open, linkages are properly lube, nothing stuck. Verifying all airflow from supply ducts, making sure there's adequate airflow, that it's flowing where it's supposed to flow to. Let's see here. And if it is an air conditioning system, we're, all our exterior mechanical systems, we're checking those as well, fans, motors, condenser coils, making sure those are clean, nothing's obstructed. Indoor coils, same thing, making sure there's no obstructions that would impede airflow. Checking exhaust fans, which is really important, control switches for fans, motor conditions for the fans, if they're belt driven, we're doing replacements, adjustments, repairs there as needed. And we did inspect and evaluate age and condition of, of all our systems.
So that being said, as you said, if it's an old system, it's not worth repairing, then we're replacing it. And with Smith Electric helping us as we've gone through the district, you know, our goal is to have everything done by January 21st, that everything has been inspected, repaired and in working order. So it's been quite, quite the undertaking and hats off to our, our team and hats off to Smith Electric for helping us with this, this task. That being said, I'm gonna, this other piece of equipment that we're looking at to help with the safety of our staff and throughout the district is an additional, one of our ionizer. And I have Chris Dunbar here to give you a little overview.
Chris, before we move on to the ionizer, does the board have any questions in regards to the audit? The HVAC audit and what Smith Electric and our staff are doing? Or just HVAC in, in, in general?
Chris?
Can you talk a little bit more about ventilation and airflow and how we see that? How we're, how we're, how, and I'm not even sure the question I, I want to ask about this, but what I'm, what I read about is, is the importance of ventilation and airflow in terms of movement of potential pathogens and things like that. So, you know, how do we, how do we get that air so it circulates, so it's not circulating bad stuff around? Does that make sense?
I'll, I'll try to, try to answer that the best I can. The systems are designed to pull in some fresh air. That's part of the Title 24, part of the, you know, part of the code. So it's not circulating just classroom air all the time. So it is pulling a percentage of outside air in through the unit itself. There is a unit, the new unit on the new gym, I believe, just pulls 100% outside air. So it doesn't even recirculate its air. So that being said, then the other piece is, you know, if they want more air in the room, then we leave the doors open, open the windows, but there is a continuous supply of fresh air that is filled into the room throughout the day. And I might as well touch on the filters because the filters become a big piece as they've gone through these audits, they're, they're changing the filters and everybody asks, well, what, what MIR filter are you using? And we're putting the highest MIR filter possible that the manufacturer allows to put in that unit. So that range can be from an eight up to a 13. And, and we have to go to manufacturer, otherwise we can ice the machine up, we can stop airflow. So you can't just go put the highest MIR filter in there, otherwise it really slows down the air and you're not, you're not filtering. So we go off whatever the manufacturer tells we're allowed to do. Does that help?
I think just from a general standpoint, Chris, fresh air is being pulled in at all times. That air then circulates through a filter, right? And some of that air goes back into the classroom along with the other fresh air that's coming through. So it's, it's, you know, it's that system that runs through, right? So I think when Chris talks about the ionizer, it's gonna explain a lot more about that filtering aspect and our ability to filter more of those pathogens and dust and other things as well.
And then how does, how, how does the air exit the classrooms?
Okay, so like Chris mentioned, windows being open, doors being open, that actually moves air. It's bringing air from the outside. There's an air change in the room with the doors open and the windows open. They are designed to bring in a certain percentage of outside air. That mixes with the existing room air, but also having the door slightly open, windows slightly open, that definitely helps with the change of air. So you're losing air through a window and a door, but you're bringing fresh air and you're, this whole time you're moving air through a filter.
Okay, we have some other questions. Marilyn, Mark, then Catherine.
Thanks. We're talking about replacing filters and I would assume that that is done annually routinely as a part of our summer deep cleans. Am I wrong?
You're correct. You're correct.
Thank you.
Mark?
Thanks. I, you know, we ask teachers and administrators and, and classified to go to staff development. I recently had the opportunity at the California School Boards Association to get some school board staff development. And I was lucky enough to attend a session on HVAC, Chris. And I have to tell you how excited I am because you guys are just right on top of it. Especially this new system that you're talking about. I, I, I'm, I think there's so many sort of negative things about this COVID and what it's done to education and even facilities. But I always have been looking for something that's positive. And the ones, there's two things that I heard about, no question that you're meeting, and I'm so glad you're meeting all the standards that are out there. But it, it's, the focus now has sort of brought up a couple of new things. The one was, do most of our filters include a charcoal filter in, in that system?
I don't think it, Jose, I don't think it does. There's no charcoal filters, no. It's all pleated, pleated, pleated filters.
Okay. And so that was one thing that was brought up. I am not anyway capable or, or qualified to, to question it. It just was something that was brought up. And then the other thing, which really has, I think, less to do with what's going on right now, but it was a study out of Davis that they talked about, and it talked about monitoring CO2 levels. Just, it was just something I'm going to mention. It was very interesting and I can share that information with you if you want. But I'm very excited about what's going on in our district.
Okay, Catherine, then Chris. You're muted, Catherine. There you go. Thanks.
Hi, gentlemen. Good morning. I heard you say new gyms, I thought plural. But are you referring to all of the gyms in the district or just the newest gyms that have been built? When we talk about how we're bringing in the hundred percent of the outside air being pulled into your filters?
I, I can speak specifically on the new gym at Slough High School. I just had a conversation about the HVAC there and that pulls in a hundred percent fresh air. I am not sure on the other gyms because those are existing. So I'd have to check and get back to you on that.
Sure. Okay. So, and I, I, I know that's important because obviously the more children and students are breathing in and out, the more important it is that's being very clear, clean, um, air sheltered. So thank you for.
Chris?
Yeah, and, and, you know, fortunately, I think COVID is, is going to, it, it's a critical issue right now, certainly. But I think the longer term issue is just general pollutants, PM 2.5, things like that. You know, we saw that with a, with a smoke that we had this summer. Can you talk a little bit more about what we're, what this all means in terms of long-term and protecting our kids in the classrooms from, from those, from the outside pollution that we're, you know, clearly seeing a lot more of?
Well, I think what, 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 I'm not sure how to answer that, but what, the way I'm interpreting it is it's more of our filter change. Our process might be, uh, you know, instead of twice a year, might, might go to quarter, you know, quarterly. When we start to talk about this next product, this next product will probably increase our, if we, if we proceed with it, will increase our filter change in general because it'll pull more particles out of the air. So they will get a more frequent filter change than normal.
So before we move on to that, and I think it's a great segue, if the board's okay with that, we can move on to looking at the ionizer part. You know, part of this is a user error issue as well, right? So we need to, um, you know, as staff comes back, as teachers come back, we need to make sure that people are using the controls correctly, right? Like you can't just turn off the fan. You have to leave the fan running to get that air circulation, even if you don't have the heat on. So, you know, that's one of the things that we'll do as well to not only making, ensuring that all the units work properly and are set up, but also going around and making sure that our staff is in service on the actual, you know, turning on and off and what to, what to do and how to use it, right? Because that, that is a big piece of, you know, any HVAC and ventilation system that we have. So if it's okay, Alan, we'll, we'll segue over to, uh, to Chris and the, the product that we'd like the board to, to find out about.
Thank you.
Okay, I will, I saw him pop up here a few minutes ago, but I believe.
We'll bring him back.
Mr. Dunbar, are you out there?
Yeah, we're, we'll, he was there, we're, we're getting him back. Hold on one moment.
Yeah, I'm just asking him to start his video now.
There we go.
So I'm going to introduce, uh, Mr. Dunbar, he's with the manufacturing company of this product. I'll let him give a little explanation and then I'll go ahead and start a video and then you guys can ask him any questions after that. Off to you, Chris.
Sure. Thank you all very much. I'm, I've, I've spoken to probably 30 districts now in the last few months. And I can say, um, just the fact that you guys are looking at HVAC is a, is a great thing. This is obviously being done in response to COVID-19, but there'll be benefits for, for decades to come of looking at indoor, indoor air quality the way that you all are. So just quickly, I'll try to keep this under five minutes. Normally it's about an hour presentation, I'll condense into a few minutes here. What you're, what you're exploring right now is ionization. It's also called cold plasma. This is not a new technology. It's been around for, for hundreds of years now, back in the 1800s. It was first developed was the idea of artificially creating ions. And ions, you know, go back to your chemistry classes, can, can be a scary thing, something that you're not really sure what it is. But ions exist naturally everywhere in the world. So if you go by the ocean, you go up in a higher altitude, you take an ion meter with you, there's going to be thousands of ions per cubic centimeter in a space like that. And you, a lot of you keep using the term fresh air. And that is key to, to helping protect against COVID-19 is fresh air. That's what, when you think of fresh air, fresh air is ion, oh, there, it's clean air. And what ions do is they, an ion technology like this, what it does essentially is three things. Ions are, are oppositely charged particles, right? So if you have an ion, it will start to collect other things around it. So dust particles, you know, just things in the air will start to be charged, they'll collide, they'll collect. The ions, you know, die off, but those, those particles become bigger now that they have a greater surface area. They get in the, in the airflow and they make it back to your filters. So what it does is it basically scrubs the air, making charged particles come together and, and increase your level of filtration in the classroom. By this, technology has become really popular and we've done, you know, offhand, I know of at least 3,000 or so school districts that we've done this on in 2020. So this is a very widely accepted technology now. But that, that's because of the pathogen, pathogen control part of it. There's tested data now that, that ions will basically deactivate viruses. They kill mold spores, they take care of bacteria, and it's even tested against the actual SARS COVID-19 strain now. So introducing this high level of ions, what it does is it, it just basically the surface proteins that these viruses need to live. So it, it helps in that regard. And then the last thing you guys were talking about was, was odors and smoke and things like that. Ionization plasma fields, they also destroy those volatile organic compounds, smoke particles. I've got it installed in my office here down in Southern California. We've had a lot of fires lately. I can tell you the air inside my building is a lot less smoky than it was before we had that installed. Get that sense of fresh air when you walk inside of a building now that you never really had before. So opening a window is great. You know, it's unfiltered air coming in through a window or a door. It definitely helps, especially in these emergency situations. But now what you're doing is you're installing an ionizing, ionizing device at an air conditioner and you're pumping fresh air straight into your building now. And I think the video, Chris, if you want to queue it up, you know, it does a good job of kind of showing that technology is hard to think about because a lot of technologies for filtration, like filters, for example, or UV lights, you know, those take care of, and we sell a lot of those as well right now. They really handle the piece of equipment really. So they're going to, they're going to clean air at the equipment, they're going to clean air as it passes through the equipment. But what this technology is why it's changing the game is we're actually sending ions and fresh air into spaces where the virus is, where the students are. And we're protecting, you know, the building envelope a lot better than, than not having this technology. So I'll answer questions maybe after the video, but I think the video does a good job of explaining some of this as well.
Okay, I'll go ahead and push play. So volume here, let's see.
Hey, Chris. Mandy, correct me if I'm wrong, mute your computer and then, I mean, sorry, mute your Zoom and then hit play.
Okay, so Chris, when you shared it, did you hit share with sound as you shared? Okay, so why don't you stop sharing and then hit share with sound? And make sure that your, um, your screens are muted, like you're in your Zoom room, make sure that you're muted. You can also send me the link and I can share it from here too.
Someone say, let's go inside to get some fresh air. Probably not, and it's for good reason. On average, we spend 90% of our time indoors. But according to the EPA, indoor air is often two to five times more polluted than outdoor air. In fact, many of the buildings we occupy could be harmful to our health without us ever knowing. Hidden molds, off gassing from chemicals or furniture, and even people are just a few of the sources that degrade indoor air quality. So it's no wonder we go outside for fresh air. Outdoors, naturally occurring ions are everywhere and are constantly working to clean the air. Ions are created with energy from rushing water, crashing waves and even sunlight. Unfortunately, the concentration of these naturally occurring ions is much lower indoors where particles are often suspended in the air. These particles can include dust, dander, pollen, smoke, and even pathogens such as mold, viruses and bacteria. The risks associated with inhaling bacteria and viruses may seem obvious, but even common dust and dander can cause respiratory issues or worsen pre-existing conditions such as asthma and allergies. There's still hope for indoor air quality though, thanks to ionization. Our patented needlepoint bipolar ionization technology safely introduces ions into the air stream using the airflow in your existing ventilation system as the delivery method. When these ions disperse throughout a space, such as an office or a schoolroom, they combine with particles suspended in the air. This creates a snowball effect in which particles of opposite polarity begin to cluster together. As these large clusters pass back through the HVAC return, they're easier to capture in the filtration system. Our cleaning process is also effective against pathogens. When contact is made with ions, it disrupts many pathogen surface proteins, rendering them inactive. Other common indoor air pollutants include VOCs or volatile organic compounds. There are hundreds of types of VOCs that are created by common household items such as cleaning chemicals. Ionization is effective at tackling VOCs as well as odors, such as those lingering around nearby trash. Through our patented technology, VOCs and odors are broken down into basic harmless compounds, leaving the air smelling more fresh and clean. You can also feel confident knowing that unlike many other products, our ionization cleaning process will not introduce ozone or other harmful byproducts into the air you breathe. Today, our technology is trusted to safely clean the air in hundreds of thousands of installations, including offices, schools, airports, hospitals and other community spaces around the world. So now we can stay inside to get some fresh air.
So the one other thing I'll add is the, is the safety, the no, no production of ozone and no harmful byproducts. And, and why that's important with GPS in particular is we've gone out and gotten UL 2998 certification, which, you know, third party tested data that shows, you know, we do not produce ozone. And that's, you know, one of the key, key, this obviously has UL 867 and some of the other ones that were mentioned earlier that, uh, you know, electrical standards, it's not going to catch on fire and things like that. But the 2998 one in particular, the test that's done for ozone production. And there's other technologies similar to this out there that produce ions. They use a, a separate device, it's a tube designed with a glass dielectric filament inside of it. And what it does is produce ions, but it also, it requires an electron volt potential higher than that of oxygen. When you break down oxygen, that's when you produce O3, which is ozone. And that can be harmful to, to people with asthma, you know, allergies and respiratory issues. So ozone is a powerful cleaner, but should never be used in schools. So that's why, you know, GPS in particular has become so popular is that 2998 certification that we have. So I'll end with, with that and answer any questions.
Chris, can you give the board just a quick rundown at some of the, the companies that you're working with?
Sure, yeah.
Not just schools, right? It's other.
Yeah, cool, cool. Down here personally, I've worked with Redlands Unified School District, Chafee Unified School District, Colton Unified School District, Moreno Valley School District, Anaheim Unified, Torrance. And then I know more your way, let me go through some more here. With Alucimar. I'm blanking right now. Santa Maria.
Paso Robles too, right?
Robles, yep. Santa Barbara. So, I mean, I, I could get you a list, there's, there's definitely
Let's get it.
20 or so I can think of, you know, in my, my area, if I could keep rattling names, I could come up with some more. But all, what has, what has been happening is, you know, a school district does it. You know, and that's what we've noticed is the neighboring school districts all, all start to want to see it as well because the, the facilities guys report, you know, how, how well it is doing of scrubbing air. It's, it feels cleaner, the, the smoke benefits honestly for us have been, well, you know, a really big deal. We've had a lot of fires down here and people go, wow, what's, why has it been, why hasn't smoked out been as bad this time? Well, they've got their ionization technology going. So that's been a big deal for us. Yeah. So any other questions?
Mark and then Marilyn.
Yeah. Thanks for that. That was, um, was really, really easy to understand and I appreciate it. I think you answered this question, but since I went online and did some research, I feel like I need to ask this. So is it possible to create too many of the ions? And I think you answered it, but what I read was that sometimes they charge a particle, that particle then ends up in someone's lungs and it can actually, there can be too much of this, too much of a good thing, I guess.
Yeah, so what, it needs air passing through that plasma field to, to produce the ions. And so a lot of people are fearful of is like, hey, what if the fan isn't on, but my GPS device is on? And the short answer is, you know, there's nothing going through that plasma field. The ions basically stop generating at a certain point, like you can't create more ions than is where it becomes unsafe because there's just nothing else to ionize at that point. So I've heard that, I have not seen any, anything from any of our industry standards that we use that say that that is, is unsafe. I've never heard, there's, I guess, there, there is documentation proving that you can't overproduce ions.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Marilyn?
Thank you. I'm wondering then, was, did I understand from that rule video that, but we are doing this, I guess, currently in response to COVID. But an ancillary benefit would be achieved over the long term for students and staff who have allergies and who are asthmatics?
I guess I have two, two little additional questions. One is if you have a unit that is serving, and we do, multiple classrooms via ducting system, so does your, this ionization unit, does it attach to or somehow it's compatible with the unit so that it serves multiple classrooms? Or, okay, so you don't need one for each classroom, you need one for each unit?
Yeah, everywhere you have a fan in your HVAC system, that's where these are really going. So if that fan then takes air and blows it to one classroom or ten classrooms, as long as the air is making it in space, you are now introducing ion-filled fresh air into all of those spaces.
Okay, great, I get that. And then what, what is the life expectancy of a unit and when might we receive cost information?
I'll let Chris and his team handle the cost question. But as far as the life expectancy, you know, this technology, needlepoint bipolar ionization, which is what we're talking about, has been around for thirteen years. Was when they got this patented and first went into production was thirteen years ago. And I can say for certain, all, all of the units that we sold thirteen years ago are still in production today, are still in use today, I should say. And, you know, so legally, we can't say a longer life expectancy because that it can last longer than thirteen years. But I can assure you, you're looking at a fifteen to twenty-year life expectancy, which is going to match the, the life expectancy of your unit in general. So when you change out a unit in fifteen, a new unit in fifteen, twenty, thirty years, that's when you're going to need to change this device as well.
So how long are you warranting them for?
We have a three-year warranty.
Three year?
Three year, yes.
Okay. And then I, I have an ionizer myself, I know how effective, and I have lung issues. So I know how effective it, it was when we, our air was so smoke-filled. So, you know, I'm a little, I'm excited about this product, but I want to know more about it, how it works. And I would love to, to really be secure in the knowledge that beyond COVID-19, there is a demonstrable benefit in the out years for.
With Chris or even some of the guys from Smith Electric who've been doing a lot of these installs, I've sent them stacks of, you know, information, the testing, present marketing materials, submittals. So there's a lot of info out there now. Even if you just go to globalplasmasolutions.com, which is the company we represent's website, they've got a whole resource library on there, which is very helpful. But yeah, any, any info you need, just go through Chris and he can get with me and I can, I can send that to you.
I'll share with you.
I appreciate. Come again, please?
I'll share with you what I have, he sent me, so I'll send it to you.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Okay, Mark and then Chris. You're muted, Mark.
Got it, thank you. Actually, Ellen is right on top of my questions, so thank you, Ellen. Thank you very much, but I'm, I'm good right now.
Thanks, Chris.
Chris or somebody, can you talk to me about the installation and how that works and what other modifications we might need in order to install them in our currently existing units?
Yeah, I'll show you right now. It's actually fairly simple. It's held on by air magnets. So this unit will attach to the fan itself, so it'll stick right to the metal fan. And trust me, they're strong because I broke a magnet in half. Slam together so hard.
Don't get your finger caught in between them either.
Exactly, exactly. So and then the power and the, and the neutral, the ground, just connect into the fan motor, correct?
Yeah, they're powered from the unit itself.
So when the, when the fan is on, the unit turns on. Fan is off, the unit turns off. So it's, it's a fairly simple installation, which is nice. And it's not a complicated, you know, that was, that was my question too. That's why I asked for a sample, so I could see what, what it really entails. And it's, it's not, not complicated.
From an energy standpoint, these things pull like less than ten watts. You know, six of a light bulb. So we're not talking a, a power increase on your utility bills or anything like that either.
So Chris, so that you know too, we currently have Smith Electric doing the HVAC audit for us. As part of this process, our goal would be to utilize them again, you know, to, to do this work and to put these units in for us. You know, and basically go through the entire district. They have the manpower, they're ready to go. They, they've done it at Luci Amar. So we know the pricing that Luci Amar got, so we're able to, you know, make sure that we're, you know, at least getting the same deal aspect of it. So they're approximately, Chris, and you could tell me they're
Yeah, there's seven.
Seven hundred and eleven dollars per unit.
Seven hundred and ten dollars per unit.
So that's the cost, Marilyn, which, how many units do we need, Chris?
Uh, we have down seven hundred, uh, let me see. Seven hundred units.
So you're talking about five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. Four hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
That we would use COVID funds.
And we have those funds available and not, and without having to dip into funds that we might potentially want to use to subsidize childcare?
Yeah, so part of this is where, you know, we have a certain amount of funds, which is the major part, five, five million dollars of the six million we received, we have to spend by December thirtieth. We have to spend it. So this would be something that we would utilize those funds for, to, to get this done. And I think there, Smith Electric is raring to go. So if we can get the board to approve this Tuesday night, emergency resolution to move forward, then, then they, they feel like, I, I believe you guys said about two weeks, Chris?
Yeah.
To get this accomplished, right? So our goal would be that we would get this done, you know, in that timeline.
Thank you. Okay, I have Chris and Evelyn and Mark.
So one of the things you keep mentioning, Ryan, is an emergency resolution. Does this preclude the need to do bidding or something like that? I mean, five hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, so can you talk to me about that, please?
Yeah, it is, right? So that, you know, part of doing an emergency resolution, we've been in contact with Zona Smith, same thing that, you know, it's the same thing Luci Amar went through. We could go out to bid, it would just take a lot more time to go through it. I feel good about the unit cost and the fact that we know what other districts are paying for the same unit. So we kind of know that. Smith Electric is a big piece of this, right? It's, it's, the unit's one piece of the seven hundred and ten dollars, but it's the labor to put them in that's the.
You say, you said seven hundred and ten dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can speak for districts down here, I can tell you that is a really good deal. From what we've seen down here, because I always sell the product, not the install. To get it for seven hundred and ten installed is, is lower than anything we've seen down here so far.
So it's like a couple hundred dollars for labor to install, which is fantastic. By the time you, you know, for prevailing wage, you get them up there, take the unit apart, connect the wire, put like, it's a really good install price per unit.
Oh, so again, we're talking about approximately seven hundred and ten dollars per unit installed?
Yes.
So based on, you know, what we know from Prop thirty-nine, what we know from Measure D and cost of, of, you know, we've looked at all of that, right? And like Chris said, and even hearing from Chris Dunbar, it's, it's a good, I mean, it's, we feel good about the costs wise in terms of using Smith Electric for it and, and moving forward. And again, it's one of those things too, that if we can get this done quickly, I think it not only helps our current classrooms where we have kids and teachers, but, you know, should we get the red zone, should we come back, these will, you know, they'll be installed, ready to go to help out.
The other piece of that, that's helpful is that since Smith Electric is actually doing our, our repairs and our audit, they know where all the units are, know, know, they're familiar with the district. So that, that's helpful, very helpful.
Will we be able to use any of the Measure D funds for our high schools replacing these?
You know, we, we won't use any Measure D funds for this effort. We, we will, we'll use COVID funds, the federal COVID funds for this. There's no need.
All right, Evelyn, then Mark.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, the ventilation has been really, and is one of the pillars of, you know, teacher and, and student safety. And so I'm pretty excited and supportive of any augmentation for this. And I think it would, goes a long way into addressing the concerns of our teachers regarding ventilation, particularly in those classrooms that don't have access to, direct access to fresh air. So I guess one of the things that I would ask would be, is this, if this is going to take place within two weeks and we don't have to do a prioritization of certain classrooms over other classrooms? Is that correct?
Our goal is to have, if we proceed forward to approve it, is to have it done before January twenty-first.
Okay.
I mean, that's our, that's our shooting goal.
Okay, okay. And thank you.
Mark, then Marilyn?
Yep, so yet again, one of my other board members, thank you, Evelyn, is right on top of my question. And I, I'd also like to just make a comment because this is, again, where the district's going above and beyond. It's great.
I'll also add, you know, they'll provide us with a meter that measures ions in the air and they'll do a sampling, a ten percent sampling throughout the district before and after. So, and then we'll have a representation of this product is working. So there should be some more comfort within that. You know, again, it's a, it's another added step of safety for the staff. And, and, you know, at one point we had talked about maybe just doing the internal classrooms that don't get it, but I, I was, I didn't think that was a good idea because then you'll have the have and have not. So I think it's very good that we do the whole district. Everybody has the same, same unit.
Marilyn?
Thank you. I'm, I'm excited about this and, but I just have a couple of questions. Is Ryan or Chris, do we need to expend those funds by the end of the year? Or is committing them sufficient?
I have a plan. If it's approved, we can, we can spend it by the end of the year.
We can at least get the units onboard.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have three months, if, as long as, basically what they said was you have three months, ninety days to pay the COVID charges that you've incurred by December thirtieth.
Okay, so we could potentially have the electrical contractor bill out the entire job and then pay incrementally?
Yeah.
Okay.
We will, we will ensure that we spend every COVID dollar that we've received.
Yes. I'm doing a good job of spending.
So you know.
And then when you talk about doing this district-wide, are we talking about not just school sites, but also at the district office, for example, BG and T? The food services and just really across the district?
Yes.
That's great, okay, thank you.
And then we will also approach Bellevue, Santa Fe, and see if they want to jump on, piggyback with us for their district.
Do they have one unit out there or how many units have they got?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's not, you know.
They have about twelve.
Twelve units.
Six new portables, bathroom, the existing two portables, and then their internal main wing.
Listening to Jose and our other HVAC tech the other day, the biggest issue is going to be that our filters are going to get dirtier faster. We may actually have to replace them more often over the course of the year. So that's something we're going to have to see how that goes and check them and kind of move forward, right? Because you're, you're getting a lot more particles stuck in those filters, so.
But that's a really good thing, it's a good thing.
So we'll, we'll work out a plan for that to help them and assist them in, in the filter replacement as needed.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a couple of quick questions too. How, how frequently, I'll just ask both of them, so the, whoever needs to answer them can answer. How frequently do the filters need to be replaced? And how do we know when a filter needs to be replaced?
This, this really is going to be more of a visual inspection, you know, because we really don't know how much, how fast they're gonna get dirty at this point, once we do this. So that's going to be something we'll check on a monthly basis until we can gauge, you know, they're going to get dirty faster out of the, out of the, in the beginning. And then once you have it continuously cleaning the room, it should be less often. But that's something that's going to be a monthly inspection to, to gauge when we should do it.
I can tell you from, from other districts, what we've been hearing is at first, you, you probably will have to do an extra change. Like say you're on a quarterly schedule, you may have to do a, you know, one in the first month or two months after, because that first initial install, that's, that's when you're going to pick up a lot of stuff in the air. From that point on, it actually kind of goes back to their normal, their normal schedule because the air's already been scrubbed now. Now, if you're opening windows all the time and you're introducing stuff from the outside air, then yeah, you might, you might still have to change those filters more often. But there, once it's up and running, once you get through that initial scrub and flush of the building and the room, you really don't have increased filter changes is what we're hearing from most, from most folks.
And, and then what is the cost of the filters?
Um, so it depends, depends on the year and our back stock. But typically, we're spending about sixty-five hundred dollars on filters for the whole district. So we have been able to use some funds to get some extra filters this year, knowing that we were going to, you know, up our ante. So we have all those in place, so that's, that's a difficult price.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for joining us today, Chris, and we appreciate all the information. And, and Chris Bonin for, you know, staying on top of this and doing the research, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you, Chris, too.
Thank you, everyone, I'm gonna hop off.
Okay, thank you.
So it feels like, Ellen, just for me to check in with the board, it sounds like this is something you, you're okay with me bringing forward Tuesday night at the board meeting. Mr. Breschha has written a letter for us to be able to move this forward, so appreciate it, thank you.
Good.
This will be, this, like Ellen, like Evelyn said, this will, our, our staff will really appreciate the fact that we're going this extra step for, for them.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, you know, Ellen, I, I missed this, Ron Holcomb's on this call and I just wondered if I could just quickly check in with Ron, whether he's heard of this type of technology? Is that okay?
Sure.
Thanks.
Ron, you with us?
Yes, I am, and yes, I've heard of it. It's very effective, we have a small unit in our own home looking for a larger one.
Okay. Great. All right, then our next item is a Measure D projects review.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is kind of give you, give the board a quick rundown and kind of what the budget looks like. You know, as we, again, as, as we've talked about in the past, it's, this is a target that changes and moves forward, right? As we go, but, you know, as, as the number of projects reduces, we, we get a better.
Can you, Ryan, can you enlarge the document?
I think you, you might, can I?
Hey, Ryan.
Ryan's to the right. Plus or minus.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it because maybe it's. Hang on, I can do it, I can do it. My, my Zoom pictures were covering up the plus or minus, sorry about that.
There you go.
How's that look? Better?
Yep.
Yeah, right there.
This will be, this, like Ellen, like Evelyn said, this will, our, our staff will really appreciate the fact that we're going this extra step for, for them.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, you know, Ellen, I, I missed this. Ron Holcomb's on this call, and I just wondered if I could just quickly check in with Ron, whether he's heard of this type of technology? Is that okay?
Sure.
Thanks.
Ron, you with us?
Yes, I am. And yes, I've heard of it. It's very effective. We have a small unit in our own home looking for a larger one.
Okay. Great. All right. Then our next item is a Measure D projects review.
Yeah. So what I'd like to do is kind of give you, give the board a quick rundown and kind of what the budget looks like. You know, as we, again, as, as we've talked about in the past, it's, this is a target that changes and moves forward, right, as we go. But, you know, as, as the number of projects reduces, we, we get a better.
Can you, Ryan, can you enlarge the document?
Um, I think you, you might, can I?
Hey, Ryan.
Ryan to the right. Plus or minus.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it because maybe it's. Hang on, I can do it. I can do it. My, uh, my Zoom pictures were covering up the plus or minus. Sorry about that.
There you go.
How's that look? Better?
Yep.
Yeah, right there. So, you know, so what we've done is we've just narrowed the list down of all of our projects, right? So for the board to know, you know, to date, we've budgeted about $206 million worth of projects. You know, really kudos again to staff. You know, the bond measure itself was $177 million, and we've been able to, you know, utilizing developer fees. And a lot of CTE state grants have, have helped us to kind of, you know, maximize those, those dollars and projects that we've been able to accomplish and kind of follow up with. So to date, what we've basically done is we've looked at a couple of projects. One, Morro Bay Infrastructure, we were able to lower the budget for that project based on our current, you know, GMPs and, and the work that's remaining. We also know that in Building B, we have about $500,000 of savings. So we've, we've taken that out budgeted. And then we have taken out some funds from Building C at Morro Bay High, things that we feel like we can do if needed. I'm honestly feeling like, and that's at Building C, I, I honestly feel like by the end of this, you know, Measure D project, that we're going to get those dollars back, and that, that number will hopefully be back to $9.4 million. You know, as, as we, as we complete our projects and as we go through things, you know, we're really making conscious effort of not adding things on to our current construction projects, you know, grabbing any dollars we can to save them as we move forward. But the board does, can see now that that $4.8 million that we're going to receive for the three CTE applications, it really made a huge difference for us in terms of, again, our goal is getting every single project completed. And so it's, you know, we, it looks good. So this right here shows the actual, you know, surplus of 35,000 to date, you know, based on what we have budgeted thus far, fully budgeting for Building 100, those types of things. So does the board have any questions in regards to this, this project GMP sheet? We're, we're going to address the, we have two GMPs coming to the board Tuesday night, one for the center section of the 100 building, which I'm going to have Mr. Holcomb share a little bit about. And I'll talk about those two individual ones coming. We're actually light, we're actually light on bond interest, I would say, with this as well. We only have $500,000, you know, on this sheet. I, that's very conservative. I think we'll probably have double that easily. So I, you know, that's, I just, I feel positive, like we're going to have enough money for, you know, to, to do the original, you know, kind of Building C work that we had looked at doing. So.
Okay, no questions right now, Ryan?
Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing then. So again, you know, to, to think that we're gone this far and where we're at, I feel really good about, you know, kind of where we're headed and, and just our ability and the board's ability to say, hey, we did everything we said we would do, right? And, and do it well. So next, I think before we, I'll go ahead and have Ron, Ron went to the, went to the bid opening in Modesto for Acme for the Center Section 100. Remember, this was the one where I was nervous about. I wanted to see where we were at, you know, before we kind of progressed and, and are we, you know, is that budget sheet that I just showed you, is that going to hold up or not? And this was a, a huge chunk of that piece. And so Ron, why don't you give us a little insight? Give the board insight on that bid opening.
Well, this was for the center section of the 100 building, three sections in total. So now we have two of them quantified, and the third section or last section, it's not coming up for a few months, is the simpler of, of all three of them. So we're pretty confident our numbers will hold. I might point out the bid opening in this case, as compared to what we do in the district where you set down at 2 o'clock, open all the envelopes and say the winner is, that's not the way this works. This is a process. We have anywhere from 65 to 85 categories that the numbers come in on, and the bids are then collated and looked at for completeness, any exclusions and inclusions. So it's a, it's quite a, it's a two-day-long, three-day-long process, actually. So I spent several hours in Acme's office. I wasn't there through all of the collating, but we reviewed it, the staff reviewed the bid on, I guess, was it, I think it was Monday, wasn't it, Ryan? And we went through every line item for any changes or additions, deletions that the district would like to make. So we were a bit surprised, I would, I would say disappointed, but maybe not surprised. In some of the major categories, we didn't have a huge list of bidders. In fact, in the main two categories that I'm most concerned about, we had a single bidder. But that's an indication of the, the shallow pool of contracting ability we have here in the area. Fortunately, the bidder was a longstanding, successful bidder for the district, and it didn't appear to me to be in any manner elevated. In fact, it was quite reasonable. Where we could compare them, they were less than in about, I think about six categories, because they bid many, many items and were the winning bidder, and pretty much expressing the desire to be our prime contractor. And that's, that's somewhat how it's ended up. And that's Y Song out of Atascadero. A good, solid contractor, doesn't pickle us with change orders, so just a reasonable person to work with. Concerns going forward for the next bids, the last section and the remaining work in Measure D would be material increases. I think we're going to see, we are seeing inflation in material prices, oddly enough, not labor that took place at the beginning of our program. So. So I'm happy to say that while I wished for a more robust bid environment, we remain first in line for the best contractors in the area. But, you know, one of the, one of the other contractors who would love to have seen bid simply got one other job and then dropped out. So they're just, there's nobody here of a, of a size that can take on many, many jobs at one time. So given all of that, I, I feel we're quite fortunate. So our number came in exactly where we anticipated. It's been refined and honed, and I'm very comfortable that we won't have any difficulties through the center section, remembering that I think the, the number's about $13.2 million, but that includes $2.3 million of contingency and allowances. And that allows us to deal with any surprises that may come up on a remodel, and there are always surprises. So I feel very good about our, we have quite a large contingency, and that's, as Ryan mentioned, we got, we were, not money back, we saved money on Building B budgetary savings because we didn't use those contingencies and allowances. So, and I think we'll see some of that in the center section. But, so it may not be end up being a $13.2 million budget. It may end up an actual cost of, of 12 or 12.5, we're not sure yet. Well, we're well protected, well insulated. Yes, ma'am.
So Ron goes to those bid openings, just so the board knows, right, as part of our process, so we can see it, we know the true bids. And then we actually, Chris, Ron, myself, we go through the actual bid itself, line by line. And we talk about who the subs were, who bid, where it was at. And, and, you know, we, we took off three or four items that we didn't feel like needed to be included. So that's something, we kind of scrub the GMP before it ever comes to the board as well. And I think we lowered it by about 400,000 by us just going through the items, you know, as well before it comes to you. But Marilyn?
Well, I, I know that we've had, or Y Song has had a little difficulty in staffing, in finding skilled and trained workers to, for our sites, or we would like to see a more beefed up crew. Maybe that's what I want to say. And I'm wondering where we are, if you guys know, with the other bonds that were approved in the same election cycle as Measure D, if Quest has completed their work with CMR, if, if we have any reason to believe that more, more tradespeople will be available in the coming months and years.
You know, what is unique in our area, and it's a little discussed fact, is that contractors will trade personnel around. Vicious competitors will say, hey, I've got two extra guys. Do you need them? What's happened over a period of time is, is Y Song has solidified his workforce. And we actually work with him, and, and he works with us. He bids aggressively on demolition so he can keep the same crew rolling, like in this case, from the, from the south section of the 100 building to the center section. So we try to keep and, and work with a contractor to provide continuity. It's a, it's a different kind of process than when you're in a market with a huge labor pool. We simply don't have it. So we guard his ability to provide the largest number of people in continuity for us. And I must say, I don't believe he takes the least bit of advantage, because it is a disadvantage not to have seven bidders, a distinct disadvantage. But in, in our case, I honestly don't think it's hurt us. When we do get comparisons, he's low over and over and over again. So we're pleased.
It's a schedule issue with, with this contractor. It's, I think we get a good price from him, and he's great to work with. He's fair, you know, if there are change orders or there's things that come through, you know, he's great to work with on that standpoint. It's just the sheer num, amount of work. So we, you know, we'll, we'll lose schedule basically because of it, but we'll, we'll be getting the, the price right.
So we, we lose time on our job because crews are being applied to our other jobs? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. For the most part.
Okay, thanks.
We are seeing, we are seeing a winnowing process where he has more people on our jobs and less of our jobs as they move along. So I think the, what we'll, what we'll be watching for next is Building A at Morro Bay, and where is he in our jobs at Slow High when Morro Bay, A Building bids? And, you know, we try to bring in other contractors when at all possible, because we, I mean, it behooves us spending public dollars to have competition. We work hard at it, but there are times we don't get it.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much. Mark?
Yeah, you know, to Marilyn's point, it's, it's interesting, because I think, as I can, if I can take this back to education in our curriculum, I think it points to the good job and maybe the better job we can do with our CTE classes and focusing on trades, because there's, and from what I can see, there's nothing but growth coming here. And Ron, like Ron's saying, the more workers, the more bids. And so I, I think we're headed in the right direction in our CTE classes. Like to see more, but I think we're going there.
This is way outside my wheelhouse, but nationally, we're seeing a, a turn in high school students going into trades as opposed to going on to a four-year university. So I, I don't have much opinion on that, other than in this case, it would be helpful.
And I have a question. Has the impact of COVID-19 in our area had played into it all? The availability of workers as perhaps crews need to go in and out of quarantine? Or if we've noticed anything with that?
It is just now starting to affect us in a very, very minor way. But I got a call on Monday from Mike Mustagney, who said, listen, I just have to tell you, we had a positive COVID case in our office where I was present for the bid opening. And it was kind of, I told my wife when I left, I said, you know, that's the first time, there was no one in there wearing a mask. And unaccountably, I wore my mask tightly the whole time. So I, I just count that to good fortune for the, for the quirkiness of my own behavior that might, might, in my favor.
You're usually a rebel, Ron.
I guess. Accountable.
We have, we have had a couple of cases, Ellen, just so that you know, in our projects, where a certain sub or something, something, you know, they've, they've found a case and they quarantine, you know, all the people that are, are working together. And with everything going on right now, we just talked to the Mustagneys, they're actually enforcing a, a mask and distance at, at both job sites right now because of just how bad it's gotten. So they're, you know, they're on it. They don't want to see this, you know, spread or have any slowdown in schedule because of COVID. So it's, that's what they're talking about.
There have been isolated instances at both Slow High and Morro Bay High School on the, on the construction crews where somebody tests positive. They, they're very aggressive to sending them home and, and isolating and quarantining. Because they, you know, I can't think of anyone in this system who benefits from people getting ill, just not there.
We really need, we need everyone to stay healthy, so including you, Mr. Holcomb. Mark?
So I guess that, that maybe brings up a question, Ron. If and when students come back on campus, we're going to be testing our staff at least what, once every, once a month, I think, Ryan?
It's once every two months.
Once every two months. Do we have any, we have any control, or can we say anything about the interaction? Or how close students get to those construction sites?
Yeah, I think you're going to see that come forward, Mark, from Acme in, in, as a means of self-protection, which works in our benefit. But remember, we're assembling, you know, I don't know how many contractors on both campuses, now 20 maybe? So each of them have their own protocols. So figuring that out, I don't think it's been, it hasn't been a big issue to now, but now it's a big issue. So we'll report back to you on how that rolls out. We'll be in conversation with Acme and get their protocols and, and give you an idea.
I think more so the, the ensuring that our construction workers are not co-mingling with our staff or, or kids is probably even more important. The fencing and those types of, of aspects.
Right. It's pretty rigid already, but it'll be, it'll grow more so.
I did speak to Greg Mustagney yesterday, and they are enforcing a mask on for everyone now.
Which they have not been doing.
So because, because what they, what, they've had a couple subcontractors, like, like you said, where they've had to pull four or five guys out because somebody tested positive. So Greg said they're implementing masks mandatory.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that will be very important when we have kids and staff on campus. I know I've seen a lot of the construction workers without wearing masks, but it was just pretty much them. But when we have more people on our campuses, I think we need to see them modeling it as much as everyone else. So, thank you. All right.
So the center GMP is coming to the board Tuesday night. It's 13.2 million. As Ron talked about, we'll, we'll share that it'll be on board docs, you know, tomorrow. There's a second GMP for infrastructure, which is 1.3 million, which is the kind of courtyard and area between the CTE wing up on the hill, the, in between the auto shop and the 100 building, the south, and it goes a little bit into the quad area. So, you know, we're, we're beginning to start to do that quad work that'll come around along with the 100, right? Because the entire front quad gets completed. And so, again, those costs are coming through as expected. As we've been budgeting, you know, I wish that they were cheaper than we had budgeted, but they're, you know, the good news is that at least we have planned for, you know, the, the budget that we're seeing, you know, come in through the estimate. So.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm gonna, you know, I'm willing, Chris has some pictures he's going to share of some of the projects that are going right now. So just quickly for the board in terms of overall project view, so we are, we currently have kind of three, really four main projects at Morro Bay High left. We're doing the classroom wing, which is Building B right now. They're starting to put the drywall up that it's, it's really starting to look like classrooms. Looks great as we go through it. We're also doing the infrastructure and starting the quad at Morro Bay. So that's the second project. As those complete, as B is done, and depending on what happens with kids coming back, we're going to move into A, which is the current cafeteria theater in the front. And then the last project will be C, the last classroom building. So that's the, you know, the four projects left at Morro Bay High. San Luis Obispo High School, we're actually, the, the pool has been completed. They're finishing the softball field and practice field right now as we speak. They are, you know, the, the, in the 300 CTE wing, the middle section woodshop is completed with the, the computer lab and restrooms. They're currently doing the welding side, and they'll move to Ag. And then we have the 100 building, right? They're finishing the south. The middle's been demoed. This is the GMP to start that construction. As soon as the south is done, we will move the north classes, which are currently the science rooms, into the new science rooms in the south and begin the north section of the 100 building. Okay, so it's kind of, that's the, the dominoes that will fall. So as soon as that's done in the south, we'll make that happen, transition. And then the last project at Slow High will be the quad, and then we will, we'll finish the 500 wing classrooms, which is really more of a summer project. And then we'll also look to do some work to kind of upgrade the, the current choir and. Upgrade the the current choir and and former music room that's there. So. That's, you know, kind of the the list of projects that are remaining. So, Chris, if you want to give the board some, show some pictures and then we can answer any questions that they have.
Yeah, I just I'm gonna share this real quick. This is the south end of one hundred. So when you see the GMP on on Tuesday. What that's about is finishing this flat work here, starting some retaining walls. And the stairs that go up to the three hundreds. So it's a quick little overview of that GMP. The. Other GMP, the center, which entails all of the first floor, all the second floor. There's also some site work for. Trash enclosures, some gutter work out back. So that's, those are the two sections that you'll see for that GMP. So let me stop that.
This will bring up the, this will, you know, again, that quad work will bring the entire campus to, you know, up to the new ADA standards. Right? So that's. All of that is being, you know, redone, re- reimagined as as it goes through. It'll look really nice.
So I'll share some pictures here. So this, this is the enclosure underneath for the woodshop. So this is where he'll have some racks. He can store his wood. Nice, nice, big open area gate so they can pull a truck in, get in and out. As you can see, the woodshop's getting set up. It's looking fantastic. This is three hundred A. This is gonna be the new, this will be the new drafting room is where you're looking at right there. And then this leads into the shop where the CNC machines will be and the welding equipment. This will be turning around, looking down. Where the welding shop will be and the CNC machines here. Back to the woodshop, just a different, different photo. This is the computer room at the other end of the woodshop. These desks, we we said that these desks are active for, actually for the drafting room in three hundred A. But we're temporarily setting them up in here. So when we do come back, he can, he can teach his class in there. And then when three hundred A is done, we'll move these desks out back into three. Three, three hundred A. Backside of one hundred buildings coming right along. Bunch of praying going up, which is exciting in three, in the one hundred building. This is the demo of the library. You can kind of see everything exposed. They still got more demo, but most of it's done. Hallway down to one hundred building. This is where the science rooms will be right here in this section. And some classrooms, storage. Front side. Part of that GMP is, you know, this is the temporary room we had put in for them to be able to access it. So they'll kind of back themselves out of that area for that GMP. And then the front quad, that whole front area will be a separate GMP later on. New roof on one hundred south. More pictures of the roof, big roof, looks good. I guess I had too many group shots. All right, let's see.
No Siegel issues at Slow High.
No.
Happy to report.
So this is our softball fields. They're making progress. This is, you know, all the sprinkler heads and lines are in now irrigation. They're bringing the amendment. To start mixing into the top. In preparation for cedar sod. Good progress, looking good. And then this is Moreau Bay. B building, sheetrock's going up. They've already started mudding and sanding and that's great, fantastic. They're they're starting to, these are just temporary walls until the storefront doors go in, but that's gonna be starting shortly too. Again, more sheetrock work.
Building B is definitely coming together, the the classroom building there.
And then, you know, there's areas in the building where we have to cut concrete out. It's just too rough. And then we'll come back and patch it in with new concrete. And then it'll all get polished. Four hundred grit polish and it'll it'll blend away. Quad. We're we're in talks about starting that sooner than later and we'll have that discussion tomorrow at the site to make sure. They're on board with it, but if we can get this quad going soon. And have it ready by the beginning of next school year, that'd be great. Of course, that's the end of the D wing where the jazz room is. Look how nice that looks.
That's in between the old, yeah, the old gym and the and the new jazz, yeah, jazz band room.
Yeah, it was fantastic. Again, just more work outside. This will get sod, new pad, new walkways into the. Into the classrooms. This will have storefront doors. These patches will be grass, add some green out there. The new fence going in at Moreau Bay. To secure the whole campus. It's gonna look great. That's all I got for you.
So the other project that I didn't include, which I should have, is is the track at San Luis Obispo High School. So that should be coming out of DSA. In January. So we we hope to get those plans. The only thing we're running into, a little bit of snag of just the DSA approval for the bleachers. It's been a huge issue at a lot of school sites and we want to make sure that that approval process is completed before we move forward with it. So that we don't have issues like at, you know, Royal Grand High School, they, you know, it took them extra year to get on their track. So. We want to make sure that we don't have those types of of problems. But if we can get that grass area practice field in. You know, for the other athletic programs, then there's no reason why we can't start on the track and field project, you know, as soon as possible. You know, if the board members at any time, you know, we can safely, I feel fine with taking anyone around, Chris, myself, meet you at a site. You know, we can stay six feet apart, wear masks. If you'd like to see any of the projects, any of the construction, we'd be happy to take you. I will say that Ellen, I got to take Ellen and Eve actually recently through Slow High. The, you know, that, the new theater there is just absolutely beautiful, turned out fantastic. They've they've cleaned out off the, a lot of the. The outside of the student support center and it it just looks great. So. I'd love to take you around if you'd like to see it. Otherwise, we can, you know, another day, another time, you'll get that opportunity, of course, but. You know, things are, it just really. You know, you you get to see some of the nice, big projects completed now. And and so it's 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 great.
Catherine?
Thank you. Chris, could, should we expect to see workers on each of the sites that you've been going through with us right now? Pretty much every day? Would, should we, could we expect to see them working every day?
Yes, yes.
As you know, I patrol the perimeter of. I've got your book.
If you don't see anybody, let me know, because that's where I step in.
All right, will do.
Any other questions? All right. Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. It's really great to see. And I would. You know, as people feel they have the time and the weather is conducive to. Just feels so good to get on a campus.
Yeah, let me know.
Okay, thanks. All right, I believe. The most exciting portion of our meeting is coming up and that has to do with going over some board policies. Ms. McGrath?
Yes, the moment you've all been waiting for. So we'll start with, we have Board Policy one, three, one, two point three, which is a first reading. Related to uniform complaint procedures. And is it helpful to pull it up on the screen or? Does everyone have it?
Mark and I are not the ones to ask because we've worked on these. So what's the preference of the other board members? Are you okay with just discussing them or would you prefer to have them in front of you?
Marilyn said, pull them up. Mandy, can you pull them up?
Ryan, you are a very good lip reader.
I saw that, yeah.
Great. Thanks, Mandy. Okay, so this one is a uniform complaint procedure. So you'll notice. This did go through the typical process, even in the digital world we're in, we're still.
Can you enlarge the document, please?
Thanks, Mandy. So you'll see the the blue has some small. Additions and subtractions from the subcommittee and the red does show the legal recommendations. You see here a change from sixth grade through twelfth grade. And for instructional minutes and then just some legal updates on the. Resources at the back. This is a first reading, so I would suggest bringing it back for a second.
And before we go on to the next one or ask for board input, I'd like to see if there's anyone from the public here. With a comment about this particular board policy. And. I don't believe there is. So no hands, I hear. Anyone from the board wish to comment on this policy? Chris?
Kim, I was just wondering, does kindergarten not have mandated instructional minutes?
Correct. This one is correct that it's one through twelve on this one.
Then. Then Evelyn?
Yeah, I just had a quick question more about the process of uniform complaint. When the board receives a uniform complaint, is there typically? Do we get typically the background of of actions that have happened beforehand or is it just kind of in isolation? This is really not a comment on. The sexual policy, but it's just, I was asking a general question.
Yeah, typically it depends, it can depend on how much the person submitting the plate complaint gives. And yes, typically it's submitted usually to Kristen Newland. The HR director is usually where it will. Begin depending on the nature of it. And often does give some background information, but I usually kind of depends on what the person submitting it. And then as a staff, then we're able to add to that and give additional information if needed.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
You bet.
Anyone else? Thank you. All right, we can.
Great. So happy to move on to the next one, which is Board Policy three, five, one, five on campus security. So you'll see a lot of legal updates here, especially around the area of surveillance. So you can see that it begins by talking about the board's commitment to providing a safe environment. It moves on there. All of these red suggestions here are just legal updates to ensure that. Signs are posted, that we give, you know, reasonable information. The board subcommittee of Mark and Ellen did look through this and felt good about the legal recommendations. So we bring it to you today as a first reading. So again, I would recommend coming back for a second reading.
Anyone from the public with comments about this? All right, any comments from the board? And there are none. Thank you, Kim.
You bet. So the next one we're looking at is Board Policy five, one, two, three. This is a student policy on promotion, acceleration and retention. So again, went through the same process of Mr. Mayfield checking it out, our subcommittee of Mark and Ellen looking it over. You'll see the additions and subtractions. The red shows some legal updates also. Really kind of limiting, you know, and further defining. And retention, acceleration, et cetera. And Chris, thanks for catching a couple of typos on this one. I got that corrected. And again, first reading, so I would recommend this coming back for a second.
Any comments from the public on this one? And anyone from the board? Evelyn?
Yeah, Kim, I just wanted to ask a quick question. I know this is a general policy, but. Will we get some information given? You know, the fact of COVID and, you know, when I'm looking at. The retention aspects and using of certain assessments and things like that, how difficult it has been. In our distance learning. How something like this looks like? You know, later on in the year. And I guess the second question I have is. What part do parents play in this? Can? I don't, I didn't see mention of it, but I did think that. Can parents make that request for a retention?
Yeah, so let me answer a few things there. So in a kind of typical time, we have really limited. You know, retention, even in this time of COVID where there is additional information and data and we need. You know, additional instructional opportunities to make up for some of this learning loss. Retention is really known as, you know, very limited case basis. You know, data shows, research shows that, you know, retention is not typically a great. You know, resolution for someone that's struggling typically doesn't solve the issue long term. In really limited cases, it could be seen as a good solution and it would be a team decision. So you're right, Evelyn, it would bring in the administrator, the teachers involved, the parents. In order to have it kind of a team decision there. It would be better defined within the AR of, you know, the. Specific process. So when you think about the policy, you want to, you know, keep that kind of broad and the specifics of how it would happen would be more contained within the AR.
Okay. And I.
And then I think you had one other question I didn't answer. Yes, we'll be coming back to you. As Dr. Prater brought forward the learning loss recommendation, when he put forward the recommendation for the. The red tier. And we're going to be coming back and giving you some updated information about where things stand, where we're heading with a plan for that. And so you'll see that in upcoming presentations.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Evelyn.
I'm sorry, I had one other question. Do we have any information? I know. I've heard from some districts down south of parents who have decided not to. Do virtual learning for kindergarten. And so they've kept their students out, but are planning to enroll them. Even though they've passed the age. So have we, do we have any inkling in that and what that would look like?
Yeah, the school sites have really kept close track of any families that decided just not to do. You know, to participate with Kinder. And so they, since they kind of do have the student at first, they do kind of keep track, even though the parents said. You know, we're gonna make this decision. So those school sites then communicate back with the families and make sure they understand kind of where we are for second semester. Where we are coming up for in person. And then we'll, you know, connect back with them to make sure they have the information they need and. And can make an informed decision.
So would that, would that student then be able to go to kindergarten for the next year? Or will they have basically opted out? And go to first grade if if because of that age?
Does depend on the age of what's the best spot to enter.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? Looks like we can move on.
Okay, great. So next we have Board Policy five, one, four, one, point two, two. And this is infectious diseases. So you can imagine some attention has been brought to this. We thought it might be even more COVID related. So Mark and Ellen and I were. You know, a little puzzled by some of this, but it is, does seem to be slightly in the works before because it has a lot to do with. Bloodborne things and things like that. So. We'll see some updated legal information here contained in red. Then you'll see those subcommittees recommendation here to have updated information, of course. Available. You'll notice on the next page. And talks about steps the board can take. Information about agencies. We tried to kind of clean things up and make it a little broader. You'll see a a pattern. Where it was about blood or. Where it was about blood or bodily fluids and we said, let's, let's keep it kind of a more broad range and not be so specific, which I think is wise. And just because look at what we're in now, right? Didn't know this one existed. So probably wise on the subcommittee's part to just keep it a little broader, more. You know, flexible so that no matter what comes along, that policy is already ready. So this one as well as a first reading, so I would recommend bringing it back for a second. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the public on this one? And any questions or comments from the board? And I don't see any. All right.
Okay, great. Yeah, our last one then is a board bylaw 9323.2. So this is actions taken by the board. So um, it begins with a, um, you know, clear addition here on a legal recommendation of. Acting by majority vote of all the membership. We did run this by Josh and Mike and they recommended keeping this exact wording. Um, and you can see some uh, additional updates and corrections there legal-wise. Uh, the subcommittee is great about kind of cleaning things up. We get kind of interesting things from gamut. Sometimes things uh, referenced in the middle and sometimes referenced at the end. So we're trying to create some consistencies. Um, and so you'll see here at the end, some. Information that was deleted from a legal recommendation and then information added in order to clarify. Again, a first reading on this one. This one's a board bylaw and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the public? And. Don't see any. All right. Um, I want to, and from, and I want to thank Jeremy for helping us out here. Because he says he sees all, so he's letting us know. And from the board. And Marilyn.
And yeah, just for, out of curiosity, I'm wondering why, why we are striking all of the code references?
Um, we just put it at the end, Marilyn, trying to create consistency. So what we're finding is sometimes gamut has them in the middle, sometimes at the end of a paragraph, sometimes at the end of the whole thing. And so we're just trying to um, kind of clean all of ours up and make them consistent.
Perfect. Thank you.
You bet.
You've made Mark very happy, Marilyn. Um, any, anyone else from the board? And Jeremy says none. All right, thank you. All right, I'll come back to the um. Board. We don't have board reports on this meeting. We will typically do not do that during study sessions. We will, at this time, we're scheduled to meet again on. Tuesday, December 15th, a few short days from now. Um, and I will look forward to seeing everyone then. Right? Thank you.